I would like to call to order our regular council meeting for Monday, July 3, 2023. Would you call the, or no, we will call the meeting to order if at this time you would please stand for a prayer and a pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Holman?
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Mr. Roskovic?
Here.
Mr. Timmanier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Augustine?
Yeah.
The chair will entertain a motion to excuse Ms. Holman from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Ms. Haines De Giacomo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? She will be excused by a six to zero vote. We have minutes to approve from our last meeting. Oh, yeah, we are, we are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law, and we do have a quorum established this evening. Thank you. And now we will go on with our minutes from the last meeting.
June 20, 2023, regular council meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Council President Roskovic. Mr. Roskovic offered the opening prayer, and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Roskovic, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Ms. Holman, and Mrs. Mills. Absent were Mr. Crawford and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Officers present were City Manager Timmanier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen.
May I have a motion for the reading, uh, of the, waive the reading of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, the second by Ms. Haines De Giacomo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the minutes in its entirety by a six to zero vote. We will now go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two ordinances to request. First, I'd like an ordinance to enter into agreement with Ziegler Heating here in Ashtrabula for the purpose of providing labor and materials to repair the rooftop air conditioning units at the Justice Center in the amount not to exceed $10,650. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Mr. President?
Hmm?
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves. Mr. Spielman seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Lastly, I'd like an ordinance to enter into agreement with Rising Sun Properties here in Ashtrabula for the purpose of demolition and renovation to the property at 4239 Lake Avenue in the amount not to exceed $29,610. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Permanent Improvement Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Foglio moves. Mr. Crawford seconds. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is, um, the first renovations to what most people know as the Gluckler Building that we purchased for the Health Department. Uh, so after this and after we close on the property, which should be this week, uh, they will be able to start the renovations so that we can move in.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Um, just one note, uh, we did have garbage pickup today. Uh, there will not be garbage pickup tomorrow. Tomorrow is one of the very few days, very few holidays, uh, that our sanitation department, um, gets the day off. Um, so if you are normally picked up on Tuesday, your pickup will be on Wednesday, Wednesday will be on Thursday, so on and so forth. Friday's pickup will be on Saturday, and that's also when they will pick up the, um, recycling, uh, for Friday, which is Route 2 this, this week. Um, other than that, Mr. President, that's the, all I have for my report.
Question or comment for the manager?
I, I just want to add, that's Ward 5 is usually a pickup on Tuesday. So all the people in Ward 5 wait till Wednesday.
Anything else? Uh, Ms. Cooper?
Mr. President, I just have one thing right now, and that is a reminder to everyone that possession, let alone letting off fireworks in the city limits of Ashtrabula is a misdemeanor of the first degree. We've had at least one citation come through my desk this morning. I'm sure there will be others after last night. I understand it's the Fourth of July. I understand their fireworks, at least show your neighbors the courtesy of stopping at a reasonable hour.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Anything else?
Not for me, no sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Augustin?
Yes, Mr. President, we requesting an ordinance to make a supplemental increase to, um, the permanent fund improvement in the amount of $700,000 for the, for the down payment of building number 4230, 4250 on Lake Avenue, and to purchase 4239 on Lake Avenue.
Move on the Finance Director's request.
Second.
Mr. Spielman moves. Ms. Haines De Giacomo seconds. Any questions or comments? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote. And anything else, Ms. Augustine?
No.
We, we did have our, I don't know, uh, we did have our budget hearing, and the budget will be on display for 10 days.
Yes.
And it'll be voted on at the next council meeting, which will be July 20th. So if anybody's interested in seeing that budget?
July 17th is the next.
July 17th?
It's due to the county by the 20th.
Oh, okay. I knew I heard it 20th.
Well, July 20th, I think, is bands on the beach. That's what you're confusing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, uh, anyone, uh, who would like, have concerns, questions, want to see the budget, you may do so in the next 10 days. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, we also will have that online on the finance page. We'll try to get that up tomorrow.
Okay. It'll also be on the line for you tech savvy individual. Okay. Uh, Ms. Bergen, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do not.
Thank you. Committee, uh, and reports, community development and economic development?
So we will have a meeting on July 11th. We will have the arborist from Holden Arboretum as our guest. And just a reminder, if you're interested in attending, July 5th at 5 o'clock at Smithfield will be Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you.
Committee of, Board, for Board meeting.
Okay. Uh, finance and personnel?
Our next meeting is Friday, July 21st at 8:30.
Public Works?
Uh, next meeting is scheduled for July 24th, Monday at 5:00 PM.
And then Safety Forces?
We are scheduled for July 24th at 8:45 AM.
Very good. So those are all the meetings. Most of the meetings had been canceled, or we already heard their reports, and so that's why we don't have any reporting tonight at council. The Planning Commission, uh, meeting is coming up. I think there is going to be one this month.
Mr. President, there should be.
Should be one, uh, Thursday, the third Thursday, I think, right?
Yes.
And then the Historic Preservation Committee, I haven't heard if their meeting is coming up, uh, well, it's coming up, but I haven't heard if there'll be a need for a meeting or not. Okay. All right. Any, uh, that was quick. Any, uh, we have four pieces of legislation tonight to discuss. If anybody in the audience would like to discuss any of these items, uh, supplemental increases to the PI Fund, uh, the permit to waive the tap-in fees for the Ashtrabula Area City School Bus Garage Project, uh, an order, agreement with Ziegler Heating for the roof repair, rooftop repairs, and the demolition and renovation to the Gluckler Building, which will soon become the Health Department. Would anybody like to question or comment on any of those? Mr. Goodell?
Yeah, I've got a question. Uh, maybe this should be for next meeting, but it was actually on the, uh, the budget, to add the $700,000 to the budget to purchase all these buildings that we're doing. Is it appropriate to do that tonight, or should that wait till next meeting?
You could ask if you like.
Okay, I, uh, I, first of all, I'm going to apologize for asking all these questions. I've been out of town. I haven't been, had a chance to come to, uh, quite a few meetings, and I know this is already a done deal with the purchase, but reading the papers and trying, and just as a side comment, I can't find the old meeting minutes, uh, on the website right now. Today's meeting minutes were available, but anything from earlier this year was nowhere to be found. 2021 is there. Uh, so something's going on with the website right now. It's, it doesn't seem to, it was like a big blank scrolling window, and you can't find anything. But I, but I could find tonight. So, reading the paper and everything, I'm kind of confused on the whole purchase thing that's going on here. It, it looks like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or, you know, just listen to what I have to say, uh, the $830,000 that's going on, I'm confused whether that includes the 115 for the Gluckler Building or not, or if that's in addition. So if not, we're looking at spending around $945,000, if, if my math is right, to purchase this property. And we're selling this for $1.1 million. This is a 37,000 square foot building and 2.3 acres. We're selling for 1.1. We're buying 11,000 square feet and for, uh, about three tenths of an acre for $900,000. Is that correct? I mean, am I doing the math right here?
Mr. President, uh, yeah, actually you are, except there's a couple pieces you're missing. So, um, the Gluckler Building that's on the corner, we purchased that for 112.5. Uh, we have a little bit of renovation to do over there, which we passed tonight. The other building, we are buying as a developer's agreement. So the building purchase itself was 250,000. Uh, there's about 550, a little bit more than $550,000 of renovation that needs to be done in those two buildings.
And that's really where I was going at. It, I was hoping I was going to hear, because that's not been clear in the public at all. It's, uh, it doesn't really say that in the papers. Well, what I've been reading.
Okay. It's, it's something that we've discussed at length at the meetings.
Right.
And it, I believe it was also in my comments that we were doing it as a developer's agreement. So essentially, what's going to happen is the, the agreement that we've, that we are signing with them states, we will pay you the $830,000 when the building looks like this.
Right. I, I got it. I understand that. But I think, um, I wanted to get that out into the public, because you read the newspapers, and it doesn't sound like, it sounds like we just bought those buildings for $830,000. And then it says plus closing costs, and then it says, you know, I'm thinking, well, what about renovation for these buildings? And they're clearly not valued at that, but, so really, that, that is my purpose here i- is coming to say, let's make sure everybody understands what's really happening here and, uh, where that money is, uh, is being spent. Um, so that's my only comment. Uh, really, it's for, I know it's a done deal, but I think that'll hopefully make people understand what's really happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's important to realize too, e- even though this is a larger building that we're selling, w- we're not using. I mean, we don't, the basement is, you know, being used by somebody else. The bank is using that, and we have areas upstairs that are just vacant, you know, so, um, this will serve us better in terms of space requirements and so forth. But it's good to point out that when we move into the building, it's going to be done. Yeah, it's going to suit our purposes.
May I add a comment?
You shoot me, ma'am.
I, what excites me is that it's, it's another area of downtown that's going to be developed. So instead of it being an empty or blighted building, it, we're creating activity on that, on this, um, south end of the street, as well as bringing a lot of employees down to this building. So I, I think it really positions downtown to be developed.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, Ms. Bergen, would you read us tonight's four resolutions?
Oh, sorry, ordinance. Ordinance number 2023 dash 103, an ordinance to make a supplemental increase to appropriation in the Permanent Improvement Fund for the down payment and the approved purchase of real estate offices for the City of Ashtrabula, State of Ohio, for the period January 1 through December 31, 2023. Ordinance number 2023 dash 104, an ordinance authorizing waiver of the permit and tap-in fees otherwise payable by the Ashtrabula Area City Schools in connection with the construction of a new transportation facility on Station Avenue. Ordinance number 2023 dash 105, an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract for labor and materials necessary to repair rooftop air conditioning units at the City of Ashtrabula Justice Center. Ordinance number 2023 dash 106, an ordinance authorizing, excuse me, the City Manager to enter into a contract for demolition and renovation services with Rising Sun Properties for 4239 Lake Avenue in Ashtrabula.
Thank you. Is it council's, is it council's desire to handle tonight's business in consent agenda format?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Jane Haines De Giacomo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will handle that in such a fashion by a six to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the legislation of the, uh, reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading of the legislation by a six to zero vote. Is there a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mr. Spielman. Any discussion? Would you please call the roll on waiving two readings?
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
We will waive the reading of the, we will waive two readings by a six to zero vote. We will now vote on the adoption of the legislation.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic?
Yes.
Ms. Holman? Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
And tonight's four pieces of legislation have passed by six to zero vote. Is there anything else?
No, there is not.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else from council? Any unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think I have some unfinished business.
Right ahead.
Um, I'd like to talk about the golf carts in the city of Ashtrabula. Um, uh, recently I've noticed a lot of golf carts, um, down in the harbor area on Fifth Street. Um, now I, I'm not, I, I, it's, I'm, it's not that I don't like golf carts. I think they're cool. I like them, but they don't belong on the road in the city. Um, I think we've talked about it. We've decided that we are not going to allow them. Yet every single day, I see one or two golf carts parked in the parking spaces on Bridge Street. Um, some of them are really cool. I mean, they're decorated, they're, they're painted. One I saw was purple and black with this stripe paint on it. Somebody had to pay a lot of money to have it painted. I even saw what I call, coming up from the beach, a limousine golf cart. It had two seats up front, two seats behind, another seat, and then there were seats in the back, and there were two children sitting off the back, two people in the front, one driving, two people behind. They came up from the beach, and I was on, stopped on Walnut, so I couldn't see where they went, but they did go down Lake Avenue. I, they probably went down Bridge Street. I haven't seen it since, so, but I know it's here somewhere. And, um, they're just everywhere. It, it, it's a safety issue. Somebody's going to get hurt. Um, I, I was going down Lake Avenue one day, and there was a golf cart right in front of me. I followed him down Lake Avenue, two guys driving right down the center of Lake Avenue, past Lakeway, right down past, uh, Save-A-Lot, and I didn't know whether he was going to turn into McDonald's, right down the middle, talking away, the two of them, and it turned, they turned down Ninth Street. Now, there could, I followed him, because I didn't want a car to go this way, and he'll, he'd turn right into it. Go the other way, they'd turn right into him. No lights on the back. And, and on my way here today, I'm, I'm thinking about the golf carts and what I was going to say about them, and, and I go by right, aid, there's a golf cart, right there, parked in the parking lot. Now, you know, we had to go past five, or Five Points Carpenter Road. What a busy intersection. And, and we, you know, I, I just don't know what to say. I mean, somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to get killed. I mean, i- if you're following a golf cart down Bridge Street, and, you know, somebody's driving golf carts in front, and you just look into the window of a store, and that golf cart stops, you're going to be right up on them. So I, I just don't know what the answer is, but I just don't want to see anybody get, get hit, and it's just, it's out of control, and this is only July. So I, I just don't know what to say. We, we need to do something. I mean, e- either we have to allow them to be here, or we have to make sure something's done about them, because they're everywhere.
Yeah, I, I, I do know that there are a lot of golf carts, and I think, um, as we become more of a, a tourist destination, and we have tourists, you know, all the AirBnBs and all this and that, I think a lot of that's coming along with that.
I, I, I'm not opposed to them. I just, we need to, if we're going to allow them, they need to have lights on them, and they need to have a little license, just so, it's just for safety reasons for the people in the cart, as well as us people, you know, driving on the road with them. I'm just afraid something's going to happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Foglio.
So, so your rant, your, your little rant?
My rant.
Brings me to my little rant.
Okay.
What I would like to see us do as a council is to adopt a rule that our, in North Park, our gazebo, that we have to run it, because when you drive by it, it, it's just such an eyesore. You have... It's a mess, and everybody knows it's a mess, and I would, I would like to see it be a rented piece of property as a way to control, um, how it looks to people driving by.
And you know, that's a shame, because, uh, when, when I used to work years ago at the court, we used to go over and have lunch there in the park. They used to have weddings there. The judge would go across the street and do weddings there. It, it, it was such a nice place to go. We, they have lunch in the park, we'd bring our bagged lunch over there, and somebody would be singing in the gazebo every week during the summer. And, and it's just, it's just, it's a shame. It's a shame.
Anything else, Missy?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Okay. Well, I just had a lot of calls. There's been, um, quite a few water issues, like maybe water main breaks, and, and Aqua's been great in getting on those, but then I'll get calls on, is the water safe to drink or not? And the city's been great for alerting on Facebook. Um, you could look at our, our websites, but then, like, I know I got a call that my water, because I didn't have water quite a few times, um, that it was all clear. So I was trying to figure out the process, because I got a few calls, and I got another one yesterday. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Manager, can you sort of go through a little bit of the process of, like, the water, and when they tested, and how does, you know, if there's anything urgent, how are folks notified?
Mr. President, Ms. Mills, I don't want to go through too much of that process, only because it's not our process, it's the water company's process, so I don't want to speak on their behalf. I will only say that, um, if there is an issue where we have to get a boil alert, as, uh, we did at the, at the last break, which was, um, completely cautionary, and after they did all the testing, there was actually no need for the boil alert, but they did it as a, out of an abundance of caution. If something like that were to happen, they will contact us. And we then put it out through our social media, um, pages. If there is a, the need to do reverse 911, you can do that. However, that still doesn't mean that everybody is going to get notified. Um, one of the things I'm going to bring up as a topic for Safety Forces is to have, um, somebody from our county EMA, they're switching their application to a new notification system, and how important it is to be signed up for these notification systems. Reverse 911 doesn't mean... Reverse nine-one-one doesn't mean that they have your cell phone number. It doesn't mean that they have whatever. And as we most, most of us know, most people do no longer have a landline. So unless you're signed up for one of these alerts, or your number is on file with Aqua, or your email address, or something like that is on file with Aqua, it's harder and harder to notify you that there is an issue. So we do our best to notify our citizens. And what essentially happens is not only are we notifying our citizens, but we're notifying citizens that don't live in the city as well, because other places don't have the type of notification systems that we do. So we try to do our best, but we, if the water company notifies us, and we also know when there's breaks and issues going on, or we're in communication with them, if there is a need, we will do our best to get it out. But, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's Aqua's responsibility to do that. We obviously will assist to make sure everyone's safe.
And I did call them today just to get a little information. And the lady said, you know, it's a computer system, so even if we have all of your numbers, maybe somebody could get missed. But anybody could call them at any time. And I asked her, I said, so for my address, what do you have down? And they had my email and a, and my cell number. And every single time that you call, they say they verify who you are, your address, your whatever. So, you know, if folks think, geez, I've lived there for forty years, like, what number do they have? Do they have my landline or whatever? They said, you know, you could call at any time. And my other thing was, so if that's Aqua's responsibility, and then you'll get, or you'll see on social media that, oh, these pipes are so old, and that's, so, so is that's their responsibility as well?
Yeah, we don't, we don't own any of the water lines, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've, I've got a few people that texted me during the meeting, and they are asking, where can they go in Ashtria Bula to see fireworks this Fourth of July?
Connyatt tonight.
My backyard.
Right?
Are you serving anything?
Connyatt's public doc has them tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
They, I believe they start at ten o'clock tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
And Wine and Walleye has them on July twenty-second on Saturday evening.
The best ones.
Yes.
And I think Geneva's on the Lakes is traditionally on the Fourth of July, so.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I'm just, I just want to add, council, I'm going to send council a sample. I've been, I've been asked, and I, I know council sometimes doesn't like to do this. I've been asked, some cities in Ohio are passing resolutions in opposition to issue one, because it's, it's not a good thing, potentially not a good thing for cities. We know that some of the things that have been happening in Columbus are not, don't, well, like, allowing fireworks everywhere are not good things for cities. And so some cities are adopting resolutions in opposition to issue one. I'll just send you that. I don't think we have much time to do anything. The election is first week of August, so. But I, I will send that to you, and you could read it. I know next Tuesday is the first day of early voting. So I will be going on early, early voting that day to vote no on issue one. But I just wanted to share that with you. I know Akron, I'm trying to think of somebody, have already done that, but we're sort of late to the game, but that's okay. Any other new business for tonight? Anything for telling us something we don't know?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, just want to say congratulations to the Ashtria Little League's major girls softball team. So that should be ten, eleven, and twelve-year-old girls. They won the state for this district, so they will be representing the district in Rock Hill, Ohio, starting this next weekend. So congratulations to all those young ladies.
Very good. Where's Rock Hill, we know?
Oh.
Somewhere.
Way south. It's south by Cincinnati.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're right now, they're actually fundraising right now to try to get money to offset the cost of their hotel stays for that weekend. So congratulations to them. And we will actually be holding a state tournament for fifty-seventy down at Little League this weekend, since the EAC field has a new fence line put in it for the outfield. So we'll have a state tournament here this weekend also.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Don't forget, the Our Lady of Peace Parish Mount Carmel Bazaar is July fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. Come on down and have some good cavadils and lemonade and pizza.
And elephant ears.
A hundred and twenty-six years.
Yes, a hundred and twenty-six years, yes.
I'm just going to talk about back to school.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, anybody else? We're not going to have that. Anybody else?
We've got the, the G.O.I. volunteer down there, so I cannot believe, you have to sign up by July fifteenth for the backpack giveaway. I'll be there Saturday, August fifth, from eleven to one, and I cannot believe the summer's flying by. So that's a great event. Free bookbag, socks, shirts, underclothing. We're going to have an ice cream social. Free lunch will be there, so it's, it's, it's a good event. But I can't believe we're going, talking back to school. Sorry.
Just real quick, we, today wrapped up our chalk box girls competition in Florida. They were at the AAU Nationals. We had thirty-something girls compete, and we had a litany list of girls. We had some girls finish first on certain events, a bunch of girls finished second and third. So little old Ashtria Bula represented itself well at the AAU National Gymnastics Competition in Florida this past weekend, so very proud of those girls. Thank you.
I'll, I'll add that my granddaughter just started at the chalk box, and she loves it.
Oh, good. Yeah, we'll have her in Florida in like six or seven years.
Well, she's just doing it for cheer.
Oh, okay. Oh, perfect, perfect. And, and we had two coaches down there that busted their butts the whole time, so much thanks to them, too.
Anybody else have anything? I think we're all good to go on the Fourth of July Eve. We're all set to go, so everyone will go home and have a nice, quiet evening.
Mr. President, were you going to ask for an executive session?
I thought we weren't going to do that.
Okay.
I thought we were.
We are? What did we decide?
What did we decide, Calvin?
I think you guys were. I'm heading to Connyatt to watch fireworks with my family.
Did you say that, Alva?
They're not here in the city today.
We will convene for executive session to discuss personnel compensation, at which time we will come back out and conduct no business. So everyone have a, a good, safe Fourth of July, and.
Just counsel and a solicitor.
Yes, just counsel and a solicitor. Have a safe Fourth of July. Our next meeting will be June, July?
July seventeen.
Seventeen. Thank you. Anybody have a good, oh, I don't have to.
Do we have to do a vote call for it?
No, no.